To my left.
George Morris.
Jim Robinson.
Paul Harvard.
Rachel McManus.
E. Akos.
Martha Taylor.
So, this is also the first meeting that we've had. Elizabeth Mitchell, who was formerly a planning board member, has resigned due to some substantial work and family obligations. And Rachel is joining us now as a full-time member. So, welcome. It's great to have you. Rachel has been with us, actually, since February as an associate, as a number of other members sitting here were associates and then have become full-time members. Spent a lot of time with the National Park Service in doing land acquisitions and other kinds of work. So, really very happy to have you.
Thank you.
And Elizabeth, we wish her well. She's got a lot of new responsibilities and new positions. She's an attorney. Not that we're...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So, the financial reports are... So, according to new protocol for the kind of February, I'm obligated to read these at various meetings. We have so the payroll invoices that I've signed, first payroll warrants for the town planner, payroll period ending November 11th, 2017, and payroll period ending November 25th, 2017, have been signed. And then also expense invoices for Verizon Wireless as of 11/28/2017 has been signed.
Did you want to do the meeting minutes in part first?
Yes, I do. But where are they?
I do not.
I didn't get them. So, for those who have read them...
I have not read them.
I have not read them.
So, we'll hold on to the meeting minutes. Okay?
I get it.
Which ones were they, by the way?
They were the November 1st, basically. They were the ones where Borrego submitted the application. So, I sent that along with the agenda.
What I got was the last meeting that we had with Borrego on October 20... October 19.
I sent that later, just as a refresh.
I didn't get them.
You did get it?
Yeah. So, I wonder if it's a... Because I continue to have some problems with my server. I wonder if that's it. Anyway, sorry about that. So, we have some... The public hearing for Borrego is timed certain at 7:15, so we will move forward with some other business until we get to that point. So, we have liaison reports for the Board of Selectmen.
I think probably the biggest thing, it's not specifically Board of Selectmen, but the OPM and Designer Selection Committee has reviewed the six proposals that we received in response to the RFQ and has...
For the police station?
For the police station, yes, sorry. The Municipal Project Police and Town Hall. And selected three for interview, and the interviews will be held this coming Friday starting at 9:00 a.m. So, from that, we are hoping to, you know, rank three and then make a recommendation in the selection at the meeting next Tuesday.
Oh, really? Oh, that's good. That's excellent. Okay. Anything else? George?
CBA meeting for the month of November was canceled.
Ah. But they did meet on the 40B.
Yes.
Right?
Yes. I don't have enough information.
We can still set a meeting just like that.
Well, I was at that meeting, and I, you know, I again was disappointed in the quantity and the quality of the work submitted by the applicant. I don't mind telling everybody that. And we'll just have to continue to see what happens with them. But they have answered some of the questions that the board put forward, and I have some concerns about some of the answers that we got. And so, we'll... Martha and I are going to meet on Monday, and we're going to go over the answers, and we'll prepare another response to it. So, let's see what happens. Concon?
Nothing new since my last report.
Okay. The NVPC held a really very interesting session with Cinthi... Sin... Pollack. What's your first name? Stephanie Pollack. How well I know her. Last Thursday at Northern Essex Community College, and it was really well attended. The mayors were there. Donna Holliday was there, Ken Gray, Mayor Rivera from Lawrence. And it was talking primarily about the various priorities of the Baker administration for transportation, both in the metropolitan area and also for this region. And then maybe somebody who's seen in the paper that the southbound lane on the bridge will be opened on this Friday, I think, at 5:00 p.m. And that's about a year late in terms of this being completed. But she painted out a strategy that the Planning Commission has been after for some time, and that is to target development opportunities in areas which are close to transit, such as the area around the 40R project at the Newburyport train station, downtown Hable, downtown Lawrence, and parts of North Andover. North Andover was the location, for example, when they went after the Amazon property that... Amazon proposal, about a 200-acre parcel next to another property in downtown. So, it's the kind of strategy that makes an awful lot of sense, transit-oriented development and putting high density, both housing and industrial and commercial, as close as possible to where people work and live, and they could disperse it. So, hopefully, the state can work with the various cities to get those things off the ground. So, I thought that was, well, really a decent session. And I don't think there's much else except for NVPC. You're working with anything on the... Anything current now?
No. I went to the planners' lunch meeting today.
Oh, yeah?
And a couple of things came out of that. There was discussion about the housing plan, and they've put together a schedule for finalizing that by, basically, by the end of March. So, there will be a full draft coming out for review, and they would like to do a presentation. Both the planning board and the Board of Selectmen will need to approve the plan before it gets submitted to DHCD. So, they would like to do a presentation. In some communities, it would be separate ones to the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. I asked whether they would be willing to do a joint one, particularly because all of you have been pretty involved in the process, and they said sure. So, we may want to look at some dates, February and March, we'd like to have.
No, I think that's... I didn't realize they thought they would finalize it that soon. That's great. I think it's been through the process.
Yeah, it's been a very good process. Their open house will be held sometime in March. They don't have a big old location that possibly won't get over.
And anything on the recreational marijuana?
We've talked about that. You want to talk about it?
Yeah, now.
Okay. So, that was also one of the agenda items, was the recreational marijuana. Karen Pinnard asked whether there was any, you know, what kinds of assistance the towns might like to have moving forward.
Won't have a good time.
So, we mostly gave feedback today, I think, by John Heschel.
Oh, is John there?
Yeah, he was there. Henry Lee, once who spoke the most, along with Kathy and Lissa, and we all encouraged any input on sort of model by law that might be possible. North Andover is well, wait long, apparently, developing a model by laws on their website, so I was going to try to track that down. If copies left to everybody.
Yeah, that'd be worth a look.
They are looking, I think, I think they've already taken some action, I think, to, if I'm not mistaken, ban retail and craft cultivation, so the by law addresses some other things. But I might not be correct on that.
So, you can have just a grow facility built on, you know, in a structure if you choose?
You can, but if you want to prohibit retail, because Newbury voted for recreational marijuana, we have to vote for town meeting as well as on the ballot. At least, that's my understanding.
Correct.
Or if we want a permit to less than 20% of our alcohol package store licenses.
How many are...
We have, we're allowed seven. We actually have eight, I think.
Really?
So, it would be limited to fewer than two.
Okay. Okay. I'm not sure... The reason why we have some concern about this is that we... There are some, or an individual in town who is interested in pursuing a recreational marijuana facility, and we don't have regulations to deal with it. That's the problem. So, we're working to see if we can develop something and have something ready by, I guess, spring.
Springtime.
By springtime, because we don't want to have problems with that.
So, Karen did say that they, for a future planning meeting, they may see if they can bring in somebody as a speaker, special guest, who's working on this.
And I did see that the Cannabis Control Commission is now looking to having some kind of preliminary set of regulations, not finalized, but preliminary set, that would at least give us some idea of where they're going with this by the middle of this month. So, I'm not sure if that will hold or not, but that's... Again, it was in the paper, this panelist source on that. So, that would be interesting. So, moving on to some other old business, can you give us a... Martha, you're meeting with two subsets of the Master Plan Committee, one, the Historic Group and Cultural Resources, and also the Natural Resources. So, maybe if you could give us an update on that.
Right. Natural Resources Working Group met for the first time last Thursday. Rachel's part of that. And we actually spent a good amount of time going through the Natural Resources element from the 2006 Master Plan, and there are a fair number of places that actually need to be updated. So, we handed out some homework assignments to various people. We'll meet again next Thursday.
Oh, good. Good. So, do you have a sense of how long it might take?
I think if everybody's diligent, probably not too bad.
You've seen stuff diligent, so...
Yeah, I've already had feedback. I've had feedback as well.
Good.
One person at least has finished his homework assignment.
Oh, good.
So, but Kristen Grubbs from Ipswich River wasn't able to attend the last meeting. She will be there next Thursday, and she's already said she's more than willing to help incorporate some of the information and goals and strategies in the Great Marsh Adaptation Plan into this, because that was not part of Natural Resources at all the last time around.
Right. Right. Well, we'd always anticipated incorporating that stuff.
Right. And it does reference a number of the maps, so I think once we get a better handle on that... Some of them are kind of existing conditions maps that we can update easily, but there will be other ones that are sort of related to changes that have taken place in preserved lands or lands that have been taken out of Chapter 61. Martin Burns has acquired Dishonlands in Celeste, so we need to update those maps.
Okay, good. Good. But there's no major emerging issues in this subset of topic, is there?
Other than the resiliency climate changes, I don't think there's really...
Well, I think that's the biggie that was not addressed at all, of course.
Anybody drive down Newland Road today at 1:15?
Or Pine Island.
You couldn't... You... Let me tell you, if you want to know what sea level rise is all about, I mean, that it was a king tide of 12.2 feet today, which is, I guess, the normal tide's about nine. So, this is two feet higher. Almost the entire road was covered, and with a lot of water, not just a small.
Middle Road.
New Road, too? Oh, yeah. Oh, you're coming back. I read that magic nine, 7:15. And so, so I want to...
Abel's detention.
Yeah. Peter's happy to do it.
Peter's happy to do it?
He has.
If you can hear my little voice.
Chairman?
Towns of Newbury are planning for public hearing notice. Residents of towns and the other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 6th, 2017, at 7:15 at Newbury Municipal Building, second floor, hearing room, 12 Kentway, Bygones Mass, the planning board will hold a public hearing for a special permit for proposed 2.795 megawatt DC ground-mounted solar energy generating facility on the property located at 136 Main Street, map R41, lot 42A, 138 Main Street, map 41, map 41, lot 42B, 140 Main Street, map R41, lot 42, and off I-95, map R42, lot 13, as shown in the drawings entitled 136, Newbury, Mass., 0192, notice intent 2.795, five A kilowatt DC STAC ray solar electric system dated October 29th, 2017, and describe the special permit application of the solar 2.795 megawatt solar energy generating facility dated November 1st, 2017, and stormwater management at 136 Main Street, Solar Ray, Newbury, Massachusetts, dated 30 October, 2017, as prepared by Robert Rosen, Waterstone Engineering, PLLC, Nine Great Sways, Stratton, New Hampshire, applicant Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., 55 Technology Drive, Suite 102, Lo Mass., 018 by One, owners of record Ruth Hayes, 136 and 140 Main Street, and off I-95, and Cami and Karen Hayes, 138 Main Street. The applicant is on file for review during regular basis hours with town clerk and the planning office. 12 Kentway, Suite 101, Bygones Mass. For more information, contact the planning office at 978-465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relatively above the proposed project should appear at the time and place designated above John Weiss chair of the group planning board.
I wrote that?
No.
Okay. So, we're going to open up for the first time in, based on this resubmission, public hearing for the special permit application to 2.795 megawatt solar energy generating system at 136 Main Street, applicant Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. And so, with that, I guess I look to you, Steve, or maybe to proceed?
Well, I was going to just give an introduction of the project.
Sure.
I think there's some people who weren't here. I see some influences.
Sure.
And just kind of explain why we're here. We're here, we're resubmitting our special permit applications. We had, it was into the board a year ago, or more, maybe?
More.
It was more than a year ago. Time flies. And we pulled it out. We removed our application. There were some outstanding things that the board wanted us to deal with. The biggest one probably was the DEP permit, the wellings permit. And in the time that we pulled it into now, we've dealt with that. We've got a superseding order of conditions from the DEP, which Rob worked on for us. He's going to explain that part of it, and I'm just going to go an overview of what the project is. Like John and Peter said, it's a 2.8-megawatt solar system. It's going to be located on the Essairs property, which is four parcels, which total approximately 9.4 acres. It's zone residential agricultural. This system will be accessed from Main Street. We come off the existing driveway, you, from the Essairs driveway, there is an approximately 1,500-foot driveway to the system. The system is going to be 2.8 megawatts, which is about 7,600 panels. Those panels will be mounted on racks that are... Each rack holds 30 panels. It's six feet wide by five feet high. They're at 20-degree tilt, so the bottom edge, which would be the lower edge here, is about 30 inches off the ground. The top edge is going to be about 10 feet off the ground. Those racks will be in this area here. It'll be enclosed by an eight-foot-high fence. That would be black vinyl. That's approximately 11 acres. The area that we're going to be impacting, as far as clearing trees for the system, is approximately 12 and a half acres. The system will have two equipment areas, and in those equipment areas are some central inverters, some transformers, switchgear. And what happens there is all the DC energy from the panels goes to those locations, and from those locations, it will go underground. It's converted to AC power. At that point, it will go underground to a point here at the southeast corner, where it will go above ground on poles to a location here in the existing transmission easement for National Grid, where there's a distribution line also, and we'll be tying into that distribution line. That's no view of the project, and Rob can describe what he did as far as the superseding order of conditions.
And the ground rules we'll have for this will be, they'll make a presentation. The board will ask questions, and then we'll open it up to the community.
So, no questions for Steve?
No, I do.
Of the board?
I do, but...
Could you introduce yourselves that not everybody's familiar with? You're 13.
I'm Robert Rosen with Waterstone Engineering. Good evening, chairman and members of the board. So, as Steve mentioned, my role began essentially when the... To help address the environmental and habitat concerns that were raised in the appeal following the initial order of conditions approval from the Conservation Commission, which then went to Massachusetts DEP. And there's fairly long list of items that we spent a good amount of time addressing, primary items being DEP at the time, and I believe still was, has some draft in-house new regulations, if you will, for solar facilities. So, that this project was, is really the first project approved in the state for which these higher standards were applied to. So, went through that process of really addressing the stormwater quality and habitat issue considerations in there. There are a number of technical issues related to stormwater management, soil types, and what type of low-impact development practices would be used. And those low-impact development practices, some of them relate to the structural things, things that are built, and some of those relate to what we call the non-structural, which are really the long-term operations, to long-term operational elements that can really minimize ongoing impact, if you will. And then some additional technical items with respect to soil types, road crossings, and concerns for the potential for vernal pools. So, you know, the major changes that were made through this process were, we brought in new guidance that was published in, I believe it was 2015, by the Army Corps of Engineers for the Protection of Vernal Pools. And this came out of the state of Maine, and a whole host of things regarding setbacks and trying to maintain unfragmented corridors for critical upland habitat, and we can go into that. And as part of that, the owners are, will have agreed to put in a significant amount of conservation land into protective easement. And so, the total project area, as Steve mentioned, was, is about 94 acres. And when we look at the protected areas here, we're looking at about 34 acres of upland habitat, which is really significant. If you think about how typical wetland protections go, they're really limited at the wetland border or to really some small degree of setback, 25, 50, 75, depending on how we're working on that. But this is really protecting as much as 34 acres of upland. And then about 22.6 acres of wetlands, with then a 12.6-acre total project impact area, and that's reduced by about one acre in total from the original, not from the original application, from the application that was withdrawn, because I think that really is actually the third iteration in terms of total, total impact. Next major item that was dealt with would have been, oh, I think, well, actually, before I get into that, let's speak a little bit more about the kind of the conservation easements as it relates to vernal pools. So, this was a big concern by the butters in relation to the potential for vernal pools and a site walk that was conducted, I believe it was December or November of 2015. And in, so through that process, what was done was pulling back the clearing additionally and limiting the clearing within the, within the 50 to 100-foot area and making sure that there's absolutely zero clearing within the 0 to 50-foot area. And additionally, as part of the protection for vernal pools, a number of these non-structural practices were identified, and those things include things such as the time and frequency of vegetative clearing, so the, such as trying to avoid, say, amphibian migration, which would occur in the late spring, early summertime period, and similarly with, say, nesting birds and things of that sort. So, this idea, it's clearly, this is going to be an area that's going to be disturbed initially, but then the long-term aspect would be, will be very, will be very much minimized. Second area piece on that is the use or prohibition of salt or any sort of winter de-icing that would be used, as well as fertilizers or pesticides, any of that. All that stuff is out. So, really, in terms of being a neighbor and having a long-term ongoing impact, we think that this should be, which should really serve very well. And let's see. So, that's probably one of the most important pieces to talk about, that, oh, yeah, and probably the additional aspect of the unfragmented upland habitat and vernal pool corridors. So, when you read the guidance, one of the pieces that they're very concerned about is they don't want you to circle a pool, right, and isolate it from everything around it. And what is done in this case is actually you have, what's isolated here is where the solar array will go, but everything else, it remains connected. So, from a habitat standpoint, it will continue to function as an integrated piece. And as part of the special permit application, we brought in a habitat specialist to review impacts as it relates to the wildlife habitat impact assessment, amongst other things. And you can see a note from them as well. So, within there, let's see. So, let's now probably best, let's move into the discussion about tree planting screening. So, I think this is probably another major item to note within the, within the solar bylaws, that the screening that is required for this is essentially to try and screen so that it's not visible really at any time during, during the year. And so, for part of that, we brought in additional screening, again, brought in a, somebody who is trained in upland habitat species, and it's confirmed that kind of the choice of the plant selection that we're using. And rather than having areas that are cleared from which the screening is planted, instead, what it's going to be done is it would be planted in amongst the mature trees, so that you have kind of a multi-level screening effect, where you have a lower story, a mid-story, and the upper story. And it's important, because if all you're doing is adding this lower and mid-story, the taller stuff is not going to get there for many years. So, we're confident that it would, that it'll provide a very high-quality screening. So, we're confident that it would, that it'll provide a very high-quality screening effect. And we're approximately 430 feet distant from the nearest, from the nearest residence. And I think what's worthy of note is the distance of screening here is really significant. The distance of screening of 430 feet has nothing to do with a requirement for a screening distance. The 430 feet is really just because of the wetlands, right? If there had not been wetlands there, this facility could have been 100 feet closer and you could have had a 16-foot wall for screening. So, there really is a dense area with very mature vegetation. And then the intention to sort of blend this with the landscape. As part of that, one of the pieces, did a little bit of homework I'd like to share with you here on the effects of open space on residential property values. And the effects of open space on residential property values are, this was a study that was done recently in, I can't remember what it was, 2005? And, yeah.
Recently.
And what this, what this, what this study found was that the value of open space on, in terms of what that does for the neighboring residential properties is very, very significant. And in the, the primary finding on this was that you can, you can have anywhere between, say, $900 and as much as $3,000 additional value per residential property, per acre of open space that it is abutting. It's a very significant addition in term, or value in terms of the neighbors in a lot of respects. If you think of the potential development that could occur within this area, the fact that this is being set aside in terms of open space with a very modest development of the solar array, we think would actually have a greater net positive impact to the neighboring community than otherwise. So, with that, I'd like to move on just briefly here, if you will, to kind of show you some of the actual changes that have been made to the, to the layout here. Okay. So, at the time that the, that the application was withdrawn, the initial layout here would have been the outer layout that is shown here in red. And since then, some of the potential for vernal pools has been identified up in the north-eastern quadrant. And this, this area has been pulled back, a number of panels have been removed and providing additional spacing between that and within the buffer zones. And as part of that, the actual tree clearing has been reduced as well. So, when you're within the, within the 25-foot buffer zone, there should be essentially no tree clearing. I mean, it's not an exact science, we don't map it at all. But in terms of tree density, there were a number of surveys done within this buffer zone. And it's very limited clearing within the 25-foot buffer and really only, I'm sorry, no clearing within the 25-foot buffer, but only a few trees, if anything, that will be, that would be cleared within the 50-foot buffer. And then within the 100-foot vernal pool buffer, we're now down to, oh, what is that looking like? Less than 60 trees in total. So, the total, the total overall clearing for the project application here has really declined quite a bit. Lastly, I want to show you the, give you an idea of what the total project layout looks like in terms of where the project impact is in relation to the protected areas. So, we have got a full project parcel here, roughly 94 acres. We have the red area here, which is the two USAR parcels, the residential parcels here. We have the project impact area here in yellow. And then we have the green areas, which are the, would then be the protected wetlands. So, the 24 acres, am I getting that right? The 24 acres, 22.6 areas, 22.6 acres of protected wetlands. And then the blue, which is the, what do we have? The 34 acres of upland habitat. So, it's a, it's a pretty substantial area in many respects. So, those are probably really the most important kind of high-level changes. There's a lot of technical details we can kind of discuss or review if we'd like to go through some of those. The process involved obviously addressing the order of conditions with DEP. And then some additional questions were raised by the tenants, which kind of went back and forth through a couple of additional revisions and responses and all of that to the, to the final approval here in April. And with that, I'd say that's probably a good time to pause and ask any questions you might have.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
The only thing I wanted to ask right now, Kevy, on the, while we have this map handy, where is the conservation area that you would add to conservation, excuse me, new land?
It would be everything.
Everything in the green and blue?
Everything in green and blue.
Sure, okay.
So, they keep for the family the red.
Right. So, yeah, that's, that 20-acre piece is attached to my grandmother's house.
So, one of the questions that we had as we were going through this process some time ago was when, when would the conservation easement be put into effect? And I think that we were going back and forth between your attorney and some folks here.
So, I don't think we actually ever...
We never slid a foot in.
Yeah, we didn't. So, what we said was we're happy. We can talk to the attorney whenever they're ready and we can start the process.
I think at the time, the discussion was that we would discuss it as a potential condition of approval. If we got to that point, then we had quite made it.
Right, that's actually in the decision by the state.
It is.
It is actually written in the...
It is part of the order of conditions.
It's already, it's already put in the state's decision.
Well, how did they express that? Do you have that in?
It requires a conservation restriction.
There's no requirement per the state. But they, in our conversations with them, we said we're willing to do this. There's actually no state requirement or requirement that we need to do this, but this is something we want to do. So, it was put into the...
It is, it is listed in there as part of superseding order conditions. And so, it's conservation easement and how that would be handled could be, I think the way that was presented to the state was that the USARS would retain it, but it would have a conservation easement, conservation protection.
Conservation restriction.
Conservation restriction placed upon that.
That goes with the light property.
That goes with the light of the property, yeah.
And that, that's my memory of that.
That's about 56 acres.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's about right.
Fifty, yeah, that's right.
Who would hold that conservation restriction?
I think we don't know that.
I guess to be determined?
Yeah, I think it's...
Would be the conservation commission.
Could be the conservation commission.
Yes, sure.
I mean, ideally, it would be the conservation commission. I mean, it's a decent piece of property.
It's a beautiful piece of property.
I mean, in terms of its size. Other folks have questions? Peter? So, go back over, would you go to the movement of the panels from the one area to the other area? And the rationale of removing the pink ones or the red ones was what?
Sure. So, during the late fall, early winter sitewalk of 2015, the potential for vernal pools was identified in this area. They're not, they have not been designated as vernal pools, but really is a, as a kind of a show of commitment to their interest in really being protected here. We treated them as such. And so, for these, the vernal pools, they're not actually shown on this, and they're shown on some of the other ones. But they're, they're up in this corner here and they would be up in this area here. And this is to pull back the panels additionally. So, so that you're, here's our, which is our various buffer lines that we're looking at here. This is our 20, this is our, this is our 25-foot and then this is our 50-foot. Yeah.
So, is that a one-for-one move between what you've taken and what you've put back?
It is. That's exactly right. So, the number of panels has not changed and rather just the location of them.
I may have asked this last time you were here. There's no possibility of putting them to the southern, southern part of the property?
Not without additional clearing down there. It really has to do with the amount of shading and the height of the trees. So, there, you can see it as an example here, the clearing limit is shown here. And I don't quite remember what the distance is, but say 170 feet or thereabouts. It's kind of the, it's how that's determined. And it's determined by essentially the, well, I'm probably wading into territory.
The distance you'd need approximately twice the height of the trees. So, if there are any pieces, you'd need 160.
So, the southernmost array that you've got down here?
Right here.
That one?
Yeah.
You just can't put another one just below that?
Well, then we're close to the trees and it shades it. So, in the wintertime, you get nothing, no production from it. So, it's not worth moving there.
It certainly can be done there, but then the tree clearing has to...
Right.
And so, it's pushing in one direction or another.
The original locations that we had, or you had in your proposal, were the... Why don't you show us those, Steve?
Right there.
So, that was the original location.
Yeah.
You pulled back to...
We moved back to here.
To here. And now you're going back in.
That's the place we had space to move. I know it moves back towards the residences. There's still a substantial buffer there. And I think what we're providing now, what we've shown in our plans, and we have someone who knows the habitat, we're planting trees there, you won't see. So, this, these are about 30 feet wide, so it's a movement of 30 feet. So, over that distance, when you consider like you've got almost 500 feet of existing trees, it's not going to make a difference. And the areas down here are so tight, there was no room to put anything.
Right. The landscape concept that you talked about.
Yeah.
Integrating plantings with existing species that are on site.
That's right.
Do you have any drawings or photographs that can demonstrate to us the size of the species that you have in mind to integrate with the, with the environment?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's included on the, on the landscape drawing. And the...
Do we have that? Okay, thank you.
I can flip to that if you'd like. Yeah, so the, I mean, the thought behind that is essentially what you're, what you're picking in terms of different tree species is you have different trees that represent different levels of story, under-story, over-story, mid-story. And, and some of these will grow up over time and will eventually outshoot some of the others. So, some of them are going to be shade taller initially and all of that.
That's a good, that's a good idea. But I would like to see the plan of it.
Sure.
If it's in there, I'll look at it.
I just want to add one thing with that. We had Lucas Environmental do the plantings. They also did the plantings for our other project that's built currently. And we had them do the plantings for the wetland representation area. And you can talk to Doug, that area looks unbelievable. You really have to have them come back for two years. What they did is good this year. Doug looked at it and said, "I can't believe this." So, they know what they're doing. They don't plan to fix that overall, just so we're not picking anybody that picked these plants. They really knew what to do.
Steve? I'm not sure if you're going to like this question, but I ask it. You know, we're talking about 70,000, 7,600 acres, right?
Yeah.
And they're fixed, so they're a fixed, fixed position. Is there any advantage considering the real technology that you have there? Flatphones that move?
On this site, it won't work. There's too much topography. You really need a flat site to do that. We are actually looking at that, putting those in. I don't think we have any in Massachusetts that we've done a lot. We have them in California, so we know the technology. But you need like a 1% slope. You've walked this, it's nowhere near.
Do you guys remember the rack we built, right? There are 30 panels, even though they look like they're in long rows, they're actually all individual tables. And when you have the tractors, as they're called, they have to be a single table all the way along because they all move on one motor. So, in order to do that, you need essentially a plum flat site. And in order to do that in almost all of Massachusetts requires some major, major grading. So, in order to do that here, we're back to some major stormwater effects.
Thank you.
I have a question. You mentioned earlier 430 feet to the nearest abutter. New plan, is that to the property line or to the nearest building?
To the nearest building.
To the nearest building, that's right.
So, do you have some... I can see the plan. Do you have some drawings that show the size of the plants that you're proposing?
Yeah, so we have the very sort of the mid-level and then the existing tree line. And you can see the very, the height here of proposed trees and how they would potentially be nestled in within the existing tree line. The majority of, in this forested area, we have roughly an 80, probably 90-foot canopy. Most of the branches are starting at a pretty good height, at least 20 feet up. So, that, you know, essentially we'd be planting pieces that are, some of these are going to be quicker growing, some of these are going to be slower growing, but that are going to represent different stages within this. And the tree density, I don't have that in front of me, but the tree density is such that you would have, you would have the new plantings occurring with pretty good frequency between the existing trees. So, let's say the existing spacing might be anywhere between 20 and 30 feet for some of these major trees. So, you'd have as many as two, if not three, of smaller ones in between all of them, the larger mature trees.
And so, the criteria we have is that the array is not visible from any property line or street from the beginning when the, when the project opens, not five years from now.
Sure.
And you can, this, your plan calls for that?
Yes, well, let's, here, I have to pull up the solar bylaw because that's not how I read it exactly. It's close, but Martha, do you have the solar bylaw? Pull that part out. Is that, the screening is, there are some important words in there, such as feasible and practical also. And so, we have, let's, yeah. Martha, can you help me find the screening piece? You've got to be spell it right.
It's a criteria G. Under special criteria, and it's G.
Yeah. 97.5. The entire project site shall be screened at all seasons of the year from the view of adjacent residential lots and streets or roadways. And the general landscaping of the site shall be parceled with that generally prevailing neighborhood. So, from the time the project opened, it's screened.
Right, right. And that's, that's finding the part where it also refers to the, it does refer to feasible and practical as well.
I'm reading from our, our criteria that we must find. There are, what do you think, 11 or 12 criteria that the board must find in order to approve the project. One of which is that the entire project site shall be screened. one of which is that the entire project site shall be screened.
Okay, it's 22 of 31 on the handout. Better G.
Yeah, I think he's got something different.
Can you show me? One's open, if you could, one?
Here.
All right. So I'm not, I'm not seeing it at the moment, but, so I, I certainly know the part you're referring to, and, and there's, there's another part as well that, that I think we should, we should consider, but for now...
Well, let me, let me tell you my perspective. You're, you're clearing 12 acres of woodland. Our bylaw and DOER's suggested guidelines says that solar rays should move away from taking large numbers of trees and preferably should go into other types of projects. So you're looking in essence for a variance of sorts from our own bylaw. So in order to get that, in order for us to get to that point where we can somehow get to saying, "Okay, it's all right to take out 12, 12 acres of woodland," we need to have the screening.
So John, can I just say something? And I know we talked about this before, is I don't think we have to change plantings per se. I think we'll use the same kind of plantings. We're gonna have to adjust the size probably, and the spacing, depending on what's out there. I think what we could do is have the board come out once it's cleared and look at the spacing.
Isn't this, that's what we said where we were, was...
Yeah.
You do a planting, and we'd come out in six months and make sure everything was fine.
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to do here. I think the plantings we're providing, those were questioned before. I think they're the plantings we need. We're just gonna have to work on size and spacing.
Okay.
So I think we can agree that it has to be 100% screened. We talked about it before, and I think that's how we have to handle it.
Okay.
Perhaps this is the same thing Steve said, that the, are we all agreeing that we can't, no one's gonna know before we do it, right? That we're gonna continue to check in and have some type of obligation through a permit?
I agree.
And continue to go out in intervals that make no sense to see if it's not working, plant more.
I mean, that's where, where, where we're...
That we're, we're supportive of that.
Do you have anywhere in your proposal, in the new proposal, that shows the difference in the trees being removed on your, let's say, your first plan, your revised plan, and now your new plan? Do you show that on the...
The number of trees?
A number, and graphically, maybe even it would be easier, like if you just, you know...
Yes. So the, the tree clearing limit here, the, the green line here shows the, the new clearing line. And in particular, the most, most significant piece is this, this section in the upper portion as it relates to the kind of proximity to vernal pools here. So it's, it's the access piece in, as well as this upper, upper corner area also.
And so the old one would have been your dotted line that goes around, where you, is that right, Steve?
Yeah.
The original, original?
Yeah, the original, original.
Original?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just...
So over here's where there is substantial...
Okay, sorry. And... That's all the questions I have right now. And so...
May I ask, Rob, were you gonna discuss the stormwater management changes as part of...
Sure. Right, so the, the stormwater management pieces are probably from, for DEP, this, this is one of the most significant changes that they made. And it was, it was the requirement of treating these panels as, as impermeable as opposed to permeable. So there are, essentially, there's infiltration mechanisms, infiltration trenches that are kind of placed all throughout the site, yeah, up along equal contours. Let me show you where that, where we have that, yeah. So what, what, these, these darker lines here are essentially at, along the grade line, so along an equal contour, there, there are infiltration trenches that would be, that would be located. They're, they're essentially four feet wide by about two to three feet deep. Actually, what is that, yeah. So, and this is what they would look like. They're essentially just a giant rock box. And, and what they enable you to do is that you're capturing all the runoff so that there's really, you're not really altering the hydrologic processes that are occurring here. So from a water balance, there's not gonna be additional water rushing down the slopes and changing kind of the relationship with the, with the wetlands. What will happen is they'll go back into the ground as it would have previously and continue to balance that whole, the whole recharge requirement here. So there's, there's numerous of these trenches kind of all along the way, all throughout the various perimeter pieces that will be used as part of that.
Is this solution substantially different than what you've built at Middle Road?
Middle Road does not have that.
I didn't think so.
No.
At the time of...
And that's because DEP changed their criteria?
They changed the criteria. That project was not pulled out to be looked at specifically for that, so this project was. This is the only one it's ever been done on, that I know of, honestly. Because the, the rules that they have have not been published to anybody. They're just their rules. So until they publish them, nobody has to follow them. But we were forced to, because this was scrutinized so much.
So at the time the DEP approved this, this was their, that the project that had the highest standard applied at that point in time?
So how many infiltration spots are there?
Oh, we have, I think there's, there's 39 of them. And, and they, they vary in length, you know, roughly anywhere between 20 and, and say 50 feet long. And they would just be, you know, four to six feet wide, couple of feet deep, three feet deep. And, and what that, what that provides is just minimal disruption from a hydrologic perspective.
Now Steve, do they require any maintenance periodically, as far as cleaning them out, cleaning the floor?
Cause you don't know yet.
Yes, they do. And so that, and that, that is, that's part of the kind of long-term operations and maintenance aspect. So that is, for the most part, it's just, it's just vegetation removal to be sure that they don't become overgrown. And, and that, that would be done approximately twice a year, where, where the site would be mowed as necessary to keep everything clear.
So are they, so there's a layer, I can't see it from here, and I didn't really look at it, but so there's the rock layer, and then there's, there's vegetation up there.
No, no, they're, they're just open, open stone on the top.
Okay. And does it have any impact on the amphibian migration or not?
Um, I don't know. Oops. Yeah. When I, when I, the, the guidance that I have read for, for Corps of Engineers has not, doesn't point to that. The type of things that I've seen them point to is things like artificial wetlands, where they, where the amphibians would go to say, you know, to reproduce, and, and then that same, that same system is serving a stormwater purpose, then it disrupts it. So it's, it's not anything that the Corps has listed as being a concern. As a matter of fact, the, this is, these are the types of technologies that the Corps really endorses. They, they wanna see low-impact development practices used for this.
Okay, so that, those are all the questions that the board has at this time. And so, any questions that we have from the board, and from the community? I think you should go first.
You need to go first?
Yeah. Don't you?
That's you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm, I'm sorry if I forget. First, I'll be Alicia Greco. I reside at Courtney Drive. I'm here as, in the capacity of, as the resident of Newbury, not in my capacity on the board's side. Do, I don't remember, I'm sorry, if you all were on the board when we first... I know you were, you weren't, you weren't here, so you didn't see the whole spiel from the beginning there. So, back in 2015, we had put together a PowerPoint presentation describing our perspective of this, this project. And I have updated that, and I don't know if I'll be able to do it quickly. I have the, I have a whole PowerPoint presentation and all, and all my backup documents, which I'll be honest with you. It's this big. So I have it in electronic file. Most of you have this from previous, or previous one?
You handed out a binder that we, I have...
But I don't think Rachel has.
No, Rachel did not.
But I can, I'm gonna give this to Martha on a, on five. I gotta run a thumb, a thumb drive, so you can move it nice and slowly. It's just easier. This has been updated with about 10 documents, 10 or 12 different documents from the previous one. I think I should run this PowerPoint presentation quickly and just go through.
Okay.
And then I have some things that I want to go over.
It was the package that Susan gave to us that was submitted last session of the public hearing, which she gave us for to get comments.
What happened?
I don't think we were reviving plans too much. They did, they did say, for example, it was gonna have just two, you know, prototypes, three. So it's things like that. But I didn't see this new site plan. Although, you know, they adjusted, they adjusted, they adjusted. They adjusted the... Uh, last Monday. Ready?
I think so.
All right.
So this is our position now since, since the last project is before you before. Two of the properties on Courtney Drive has transferred. Six Courtney Drive has transferred, and the Marshals have since moved out of state. And Julie and Shelley have purchased that property. And one Courtney Drive has transferred previous to that. And Regina and Ryan live next to it a minute. So this is all about, we've all discussed, and we all feel the same way.
Okay.
So we are strongly in favor of the solar power, solar power installations that are appropriately cited as a testament, one of our Courtney Drive butters, which is Rich, and Ian, put solar panels on their, on their roof. This plant is inappropriate, we believe is inappropriately cited for the following reasons, which I will be discussing in a more detailed presentation. We think it violates several of the tenants of the bylaw. We feel the purpose of the bylaw is to address public health, safety, and welfare concerns, minimize impacts on scenic, natural, historic resources, provide adequate financial insurance for the eventual deconditioning of such installations. We also believe that zoning is put into place to prevent new developments from interfering with existing uses in order to preserve the character of other community. Effectively changing the zoning to a commercial or industrial setting undermines the good faith the tax base placed in zoning regulations. We believe this project is in direct conflict with the town of Newbury's master plan. The negative environmental impact to wetlands wildlife, in public welfare, clear-cutting forests, 1,600-plus trees, and the Parker River watershed, we feel far outweighs the benefit received from solar energy. There are unresolved stormwater management impacts to the wetlands and the surrounding property's environment. This project goes against guidance from the Massachusetts DOE, which strongly discourages locations that result in significant losses of land and natural resources. Their guidance pushes them in the direction of brownfields, rooftops, already disturbed land. The EPA also echoes that sentiment at the federal level. The opposition by the residents are the same as they were before. We believe there'll be negative impact to property values and other detrimental aspects of living within 1,000 feet of a large-scale solar installation. We believe there'll be increased highway noise, fire hazard, aesthetic, loss of trees, blah, blah, blah. So that's my neighbor's house. He's got solar...
And a ranch.
So it's not like we're anti-solar people. So these are, but we feel the, the improper, the environment impacts of improperly cited. The deforestation, clear-cutting of 1,600-plus trees will have a severely detrimental impact to the surrounding lands and the microclimate of the, of the area. The finality of the practice of clear-cutting forests to make way for solar installations is strongly discouraged at the state, town, and local levels. Trees provide tremendous amount of importance. Again, I'll mention that Paris Climate Agreement was the first time that the world agreed that trees are very, very important. And what's unique about this country is when we have decisions that are made on these types of impacting, deep forestation, they're not meant, meant, those, the decisions are not made at the central government level. They're meant... They're made at the town halls across the country. And that's the blessings of having really here. I should write a book. So this is the impact of cutting down twelve-plus acres of forested land. In one year, one tree cools like ten air conditioners running continually, absorbs seven hundred and fifty gallons of stormwater, and it filters sixty pounds of pollutants from the air. We have to be mindful that this project is a bus in highway as well. So you have the carbon stuff. Hopefully, we'll clear that out too. This is the master plan. Now, I know you guys are in the middle of updating it, but I don't know how the final version is, but I don't think it's going to be too different from the one in 2006. So, the goals are to preserve the town's scenic landscapes and rural character, protect and enhance critical upland water resource and wetland habitats to sustain biodiversity, manage future land development and redevelopment in an environmentally sensitive manner, educate the Newbury residents and businesses about the town's natural resources, resource threats and resource protection tools and techniques, increase the awareness of uniqueness of Newbury, including its cultural historic resources, encourage the growth of business and developments that are consistent with community character and historic development patterns, encourage businesses that appropriately support residents' local needs, develop and encourage industries that support and preserve Newbury's natural and cultural resources. We believe that this proposed citing of the solar plant in this location violates these goals. This is the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. They strongly discourage designating locations that result in significant loss of land and natural resources, including farm and forest land, and encourage rooftop citing as well as locations in industrial and commercial districts or on vacant disturbed lands. Significant tree cutting is problematic because of the important water management, cooling, and climate benefits trees provide. This same language, verbatim, is echoed in our bylaw. It's the same exact thing. And this is model zoning. Here's the project. Now, I know he said that it's gonna be four hundred and, what, fifty feet from the closest house? In reality, it's a hundred and twenty-five feet from the property lot. And it's a hundred and maybe thirty-five feet from this property lot. It's the, project is equivalent of eight to ten Gillette stadiums. This is our neighborhood now in the summer. It's all green. All green. This is in the winter. Or actually, late fall. Now, what's significant about this is they're deciduous trees. They're all deciduous trees. And even if he does put a, what you're gonna see with their proposed landscape plan right now is a line like that. It'll come right across, and I'm not sure, I know for a fact that that won't be in character with this. To me, when you clearcut, clearcut all this forested land and put in that, you may as well put a neon sign in the sky, look here with two arrows down. And you have to also remember that especially five Courtney Drive, they have living spaces that are up high. They're up, they live up in the four stories up. They're, I live up on the second floor, she lives up on the second, third, and fourth floor. You're gonna, you're gonna see over that, and you're gonna see it cut. These are the lines of sight. Now, I'm gonna bring up Route ninety-five. I'm not sure whether or not you'll see it from there. The bylaw states it can't be visible from any street or road. Courtney Drive is very important, but ninety-five is too. I don't want people, there's nothing like this in residential development on the North Shore. Nothing. And it would stand me immensely if you rode up the highway at ninety-five and you see this large thing on the side of the road that you see on Route two when you go out there and say, oh, we're in Newbury now. Now, this, this is a similar-sized installation in Denver. So, this is what you'll see. What's interesting about this is in Denver, they have everything trees. We don't have it. This is the height of a person, about six feet. This is a ten-to-twelve-foot panel. When they had the array up, and when you had the mock thing, the mock ones up, it was confirmed, some revealing, you could see it from at least one home. And I believe if you were up on her deck, you could see that too. Once those cuts, those trees are cleared. So that's two to four stories high, there are several homes that have living spaces two to four stories high, and they will have a direct line of sight in the following. This is that, not a very good picture, but this one's better. So, this is that piece that he showed up here earlier. This is six-foot person tall here. Here's the line of sight. There's a tree, this is the existing, existing grade, existing grade. The highest site elevations are twelve feet high. I mean, we got issues with what happens if trees die. There is a law that states, there's an easement, that if this solar panel goes in, and for some reason, the trees are shaded, and the trees fall on the neighboring property, the project, the owners of the project can clearcut the neighbor's trees without permission because they're shading their, their properties, and give the bill to the property owner.
Where is that?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. Isn't it?
Yep.
Okay, so. This one here. These are, these are just some, some concerns. Okay, so these are, but we feel the violations to the town of Newbury's bylaws. It's an environmentally irresponsible project cited on forested land. It violates the general requirement to the town of Newbury bylaw, general climate aid, echoing the DOE are strongly awarded guidance, and therefore, the special permit should be denied. In addition, this direct violation is a direct violation to the Newbury master plan. Citing a large-scale industrial installation abutting residential properties in zone residential use will devalue the surrounding properties. Abutting properties, which include one, three, five, and six Courtney Drive, have living spaces two to four stories, thirty-five feet high. Screening the site from their view in all seasons is impossible, and therefore, the permit should be denied. The close proximity of the abutting properties, a hundred and thirty feet from six Courtney Drive, a hundred and fifty feet from five Courtney Drive, three hundred feet away from three Courtney Drive, will have a substantial and undue adverse effect on the general welfare of the citizens of Courtney Drive. We believe that Borrego has submitted an incomplete application. The missing requirements are the incorrect stormwater analysis report. We, I have a letter dated April twenty-fourth, I think, Martha, I think you have it. I believe that this project, because, you haven't seen that?
No.
All right, I have it in the, in the document, I'll leave it to you. This project has met the DDP standards, did they issue a superseding order of conditions? But we believe that the special permit process is a higher standard than, especially for stormwater, than meeting the Wetlands Protection Act. Because the Wetlands Protection Act, which is all the superseding where, where conditions speaks to, is all the conservation, which the purview is, doesn't look at the surrounding watershed, our properties, how, if there's anything to be stormwater impact to water in our, our basements. That was outside of the purview of the, of the Wetlands Protection Act. But it's not outside of the purview of this planning board. There's a, there was a missing operations and maintenance plan. I question now whether or not that is actually complete. The wetland wildlife habitat study, there was a habitat study done, and I've got it. It only looked at the upland piece, it did not look at the wetland, wetland wildlife piece. I think the Board should have a look at that. We strongly, strongly want a visual study done in all seasons of this, of this project. If you have, I don't, I don't believe that we should be wasting anybody else's more time. I don't think there's anything they can do to screen this, this project, aside from cutting it out and moving it, which doesn't make it financially feasible. I, I don't think you should waste any more of our time, their time, or your time. I, I think that this project is just a bad fit. I mean, I believe the special permit process exists to put a square pad, which is this industrial installation, into a round hole. And that is the zone residential area. And the special permit process is the grease. And you can put all the grease you want onto this, to this project, whack it as hard as you can. I don't believe it'll ever fit in a residential neighborhood. Abutting properties that exchange for eight hundred thousand, it just doesn't fit. There's been a concern about a trapped, increased traffic noise once the clearcutting floors is down. The, I mean, we hear the highway now, but my concern is it's gonna be increased. And when the sound could possibly bounce off the arrays, and when the wind blows, because it does, the east wind is when you can really hear it. I would like to have, I mean, some evidence that there is not gonna be any impact on that property values, because I can't find it. I have been looking for years. I cannot find it. And the reason why I can't find it is because towns don't put these properties in zoned residential neighborhoods. They just, they just don't. They just don't. So, in closing, the special permit provision of the solar bylaw is intended to protect town residents from detrimental consequences of inappropriately citing an industrial or commercial installation in a residential neighborhood. For all the valid reasons stated in this presentation and in the Neighbor's appendix, which I'm gonna give you, tell me you already have it. We believe that the Planning Board has an obligation to deny the special permit application to this project at London City. Now, the other piece that I did from before is put together a table, I don't know if you've seen this before, but this looks at the solar bylaw. It's a six-page document.
Three boxes.
And a new one. So. What, what we did is we took the bylaw and broke it down into six pages, but nineteen items. And a appendix. So if we look at section, at number one, the purpose and intent, the overarching framework that is the by, the bylaw. The purpose and intent of the town zoning bylaw is to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the town of Newbury, and to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources, and the prevention of blight and pollution to the, of the environment, to encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. We believe this project does not meet with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, as it does not conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources. Nor does it encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. I know they've speculated putting some of this property into a conservation restriction, but in my, in my mind, clearcutting sixteen hundred trees, it doesn't, it doesn't quite. Number two, in deciding early to issue the special permit in the residential agricultural district, the special permit granting authority must find, among other things, that the proposed use instructor that for the best interest of the town and not injurious or obnoxious to neighboring properties. This project does not meet these criteria because it will adversely impact the character of the entire town, and will also be injurious and obnoxious to the neighboring residential properties. The 2006 master plan lists forest land and residential character are most important to residents of Newbury. This project destroys both those characteristics. We believe the evidence will show that the project will be injurious and obnoxious due to the following. Now, if we go to the last page of this document, the appendix says, there are no other privately-owned large-scale solar industrial, industrial plant, power plant situated in a residential agricultural neighborhood on the North Shore currently exist. The increased highway noise to the abutting residential homes due to significant deforestation refer to clearcutting over sixteen hundred trees, which is a buffer to the Route ninety-five noise. The potential flooding impact to neighboring homes resulting from the floodplain rising and its stormwater impact on neighboring properties. I have a letter dated April twenty-fourth from Christensen and Sur, and Surbay, which raises these concerns. And a response letter dated April twenty-fifth submitted on the special permit application. It's in the special permit application from, from the applicant too. It is a major concern to the neighboring property owners that this technical conflict of information described in these letters has not been addressed. Again, that speaks to it because it doesn't impact the Wetlands Protection Act. The wildlife habitat assessment for Borrego Solar Systems performed by Wetland Strategies and Solutions LLC focuses on upland habitat only and states that there is no potential method possible to mitigate the outright loss to habitat in this proposal. It will remove virtually all habitat value and diminish the quality of the adjacent habitat. It will result in mortality to minimally mobile animal species. It will open the currently closed canopy, which will raise ground surface temperatures within the remaining adjacent forests, potentially damaging our surrounding properties. Increase, create, it will create increased wind flow of trees along the edge of the newly cleared area, impacting any trees that are currently on the adjacent properties, surrounding conservation area, and the screenings that in the current proposal. It will increase invasive plant species along the new forest edge and spreading into the neighboring properties. When the gentleman that did the wildlife impact study came for the board over the last time, what struck me is that he indicated when he bought this property, what, what was very unique to this property is that it has no invasive species. There's no purple loose stripes growing in there, there's no, there's, there's none of that.
Fragmites.
Frag, those fragmites, my kids used to go home out of the water. But there's none of that in there now, currently. It's pristine, it's pristine. And by punching a hole in the canopy and developing this, this property, it, it increases the opportunities for those invasive plant species. Ongoing project maintenance will increase significant disturbance to the adjacent properties and the surrounding conservation area. This project lacks a meaningful landscape plan because there is inadequate detail in the application regarding the installation and maintenance of the screening. There is no maintenance plan described in the application to ensure screening remains adequate to meet the requirements of the by, the bylaw. There is no evidence that this project will provide effective screening. There is no completed visual impact study to determine what the visual impact will, will be to the surrounding properties. There is potential impact to the surrounding properties due to glassing. Negative impact to the home values. I have seen, I have evidence of this in the 2015 appraisal of my home, which describes, I have it in that, in that electronic copy. I had, we had a house appraised, and it descri, and when you have a home appra And it descri, and what it, when you have a home appraised, it appraised the value of your home. They look at the neighborhood boundaries, what's around the neighborhood, because what's next door really does matter. It lists comparable properties on Courtney Drive. At the time that we had this appraisal done, the comparable properties were on Fodderland, Fodderland Drive, and I believe Nodville. What am I going to compare my property to once this project goes in? Where in town, or in any other town around here, is there going to be a large scale industrial installation in a zone residential neighborhood? Okay, that's number two. Now, number three. The purpose of the town's solar bylaw is to, among other things, address public welfare, concerns, and minimize impacts on the natural resources. This project will result in the destruction of sixteen hundred plus trees and the obliteration of valuable wildlife habitat, of which there is no method or approach to fully compensate for. I took that language right out of the wildlife habitat study that was done on this project earlier. The remaining surrounding habitat will be diminished in, in quality as a direct result of this project. Affected will be adjacent verve pools, wetlands, and the intrusion into the forests of invasive species. Four, project site. The Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources discourages applicants from selecting locations for ground mounted solar photovoltaic installations, which require significant tree cutting due to the important water management, cooling, and climate benefit that trees provide. Applicants are therefore encouraged to site installations on vacant disturbed land in a manner which will minimize tree cutting to the greatest, greatest extent possible. This project requires significant tree cutting. Sixteen hundred plus trees to be cleared over twelve plus acres. The state and the town have decided that large installations like this should not be cited in currently wooded areas, but should be cited on previously disturbed brownfields and reflects the conclusion that the environmental benefits of solar energy are not enough to justify the environmental harm associated with significant tree cutting. The pending SMART program, program, incentivizes, de-incentivizes these type of installations cited on greenfields. This project is cited incorrectly and it does not minimize tree cutting to the greatest extent possible in the bylaw. Now, I thought about this a lot. Because I do put myself in your spot and I don't envy you not this much. But if, I thought, how could this project, I mean, you've got to cut down trees. How could this project possibly minimize, how could you minimize tree cutting? And the answer that I come up with, you can minimize, you can minimize the impact of cutting down trees by citing these projects, places where there's already no trees, like the dump. You're minimizing tree cutting if you place them there, because there are no trees. And it's a brownfield. And I'm like, that's it? Number five, all such solar, solar photovoltaic installations shall be constructed and operated in a manner that minimizes any adverse visual, safety, and environmental impacts. This project will result in significant adverse environmental impacts. This project will remove all habitat value, open the tree canopy, increase wind throw, affecting surrounding properties, um, con, affecting the surrounding conservation areas, the adjacent properties, cutting sixteen hundred plus trees and replacing them with seven thousand plus solar panels cannot be mitigated in a way that preserves those values. The visual impacts to the surrounding properties are not fully known and this project will have significant impact once sixteen hundred plus trees are removed. Number six, these provisions require certain information in documents, including public outreach plan with the project development timeline and how the project applicant will meet the requirements, the special permit notification, and stormwater report. The applicant has not met these final requirements. It has not submitted a meaningful public outreach plan and has submitted a drainage analysis that neighboring consultants view as significantly flawed. Refer to the later date, again, April twenty fourth from Christensen and Surgay raising concerns and the response letter dated April twenty fifth submitted in the special permit application. It is a major concern to the neighboring property owners that this technical conflict of information described in these letters has not been addressed. Number seven, requires open space agricultural impact report that identifies the impacts of the project, including the impact on natural resources and any trees or wildlife to be displaced by the installation. Documented project impacts per the wildlife assessment removes virtually all habitat value from this area as well as diminish the quality of adjacent habitat. Result in mortality, the less and minimally mobile animal species, significantly increased ground surface temperature at site and surrounding areas, making areas less habitable for many species of wildlife. Increased wind speeds will likely lead to wind throw along the edges of the newly cleared cut area. Increase the likelihood of airborne seeds and invasive plant species. There is no potential method or approach to fully compensate for the outright loss of habitat from construction of the project. And it was also noted there's a discrepancy of sixteen versus twelve acres and there are locations where panels extended to the fifty-foot no-bill zone. Number eight, determining, in determining whether to issue a special permit, the SPGA shall consider the open space agricultural impact report. The planning board has avoided discussing this requirement and the significant impacts this project has had on the natural resources and the property and the surrounding values. Number nine, land plan. Soil erosion and habitat impacts. The applicant and any co-applicants may be required to replace up to one hundred percent of any and all trees with caliper six inches or over that are removed for the project. Again, there is no potential method or approach to fully compensate for the outright loss of habitat and destruction of this, of this project. Number ten, site condition suitability. Structures shall be screened from view by means of vegetation, fencing, or physical topography to the extent reasonable and practical considering the characteristics of the individual, of the individual site. The arrays are clearly visible from six Courtney Drive and the residents have not seen a meaningful plan that is able to fully screen this project from view. The proposed landscaping of abracadis, pine, and juniper are not in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood. This industrial installation is sighted in the middle of the woods and indigenous woodland species must be used to screen the project. If not, the project will be completely out of character with, with the neighborhood. The loss of the tree line from the horizon must be screened as well. The project must also be screened from ninety-five. There has been no visual impact study form from any viewpoint in the town of Newbury. Now, we go to the, to the special permit review criteria. These are the fi, the findings. Number eleven, the proposed tree use and development will not have a substantial undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the area, or the public health, safety, and general welfare. This project will have a substantial and undue adverse effect on adjacent property, the character of the area, and the general welfare. The recent, then it was recent, mock-up work demonstrated facility will be visiting, will be visible from abiding properties. The project will have an adverse effect on the character of the area, changing it from a wooded residential neighborhood to an industrial setting. Buyers do care about location of what is located next door, whether or not the industrial facility is directly visible, which it will be from at least some properties. Several local Realtors have also confirmed that this project will devalue the surrounding properties. An appraisal done on the property at three Courtney Drive listed site location and the neighborhood criteria has criteria for value of properties. Once this installation is installed, there will be nothing in Newbury to compare Courtney Drive properties to. Also, if screening an obnoxious neighborhood with sufficient protection from neighboring properties, there would be no zoning loss. Number twelve, the nature and intensity of the intended operations will not discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings or impair the value thereof. This citing this large industrial facility in the neighborhood will discourage the appropriate residential development and use of, of adjacent land and will also impair the value of those nearby properties. The burden of proof lies with the applicant, not with the buyers. I have not seen any proof that this project will not negatively impact us. The proposed use and development will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of any natural, scenic, or historical feature of significant importance. This project will result in the destruction of sixteen hundred trees and obliteration of valuable wildlife habitat, of which there is no method or approach to fully compensate for. The remaining surrounding habitat will be diminished in quality as a direct result of this project. Affected will be the adjacent verve pools, wetlands, and the intrusion into the forests of invasive species. Number fourteen, the entire project shall be screened at all seasons of the year from the view of adjacent residential lots and streets or roadways. And the general landscape of the site shall be in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood. This project will not be screened at all seasons from view of the adjacent lot, residential lots, or road, roadways. Also, the project, the proposed structures and landscaping are not in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood. The arrays will be clearly visible from six Courtney Drive. The proposed landscaping, abracadis, pine, and juniper are not in character with that generally prevailing in the neighborhood. And abracadis are not consistent with existing indigenous woodland species in the area. This project will be completely out of character with the neighborhood. Project must also be screened from ninety-five. There's been no visual assessment done from that viewpoint. They're going to take down sixteen hundred plus trees in their, in their proposed plan here. They replace it with twenty-three abracadis, eighteen pines, and twenty-five cedars. Sixty-six trees. The volume of cut and fill, the number of removed trees that are six inches or more in caliper, the area of wetland vegetation displaced, soil erosion, and threat of air and water pollution shall be held to a minimum set by the Special Permit Granting Authority. This project does not minimize tree cutting, but involves cutting more than sixteen hundred trees. Adequate provisions shall be provided for stormwater management. This project does not adequately provide for stormwater management. Potential flooding impact to neighboring homes resulting from the floodplain rising and its stormwater impact on neighboring properties. Refer to the letter dated April twenty fourth, again, raising concerns and the response letter dated April twenty fifth submitted to the special, in the special permit application. It is a major concern to the neighboring property owners that this technical conflict of information described in these letters has not been addressed. The DEP superseding order conditions only look at stormwater impact as it pertains to the Weapons Protection Act. Number seventeen, unreasonable departure from the character of the scale of buildings viewed from public realities and places shall be minimized. This project is a large industrial facility. It will be an unreasonable departure from the character of the buildings in the, in the area. Number eighteen, the proposed development of the site shall be in compliance with provisions of Newbury zoning bylaw, including parking, signs, landscaping, environmental standards, and other pertinent sections. This project is not in compliance with either the specific requirements of the bylaw, all the reasons stated above, or with the overarching purpose of the bylaw as a whole or the more specific purpose of the town's solar bylaw provisions. And the last one is the operation and maintenance plan. And I still question whether it's back.
Are there other folks from the neighbors who would like to amplify or say additional stuff?
I think there are.
How are you?
If I'm not mistaken, we did this exercise once before, right?
Got to give your name.
Daniel Caffey, five Courtney Drive.
Please come up. You've got to come up. You've got to be on stage.
Okay. On stage. We did this exercise, I don't know, was it a year and a half ago? And we put the yellow, we put the red balloons up.
Standing right in front of the camera. Look at him.
I'm looking to be a star. And we, we did this exercise. We all did this walk. We, they put up the red balloons. We all saw the red balloons, right? And we said, wow, you're right. How did you do this? I see them right there. All right, they did it. We don't know where they're going to put them. Now they're going to take, they went and take the trees down and it's, no. Okay, now we'll look at it and say, well, jeez, they took them down now. I mean, what are we going to do now? They already took the trees down, all right? I mean, if we should pull along with this thing? And then I started thinking about the monetary thing, about the monetary value of this. Here's your guys, they're going to, here's your profit takers, all of them, right here. These four, right here. They're going to leave, leave five field. I've been here twenty years. Four other people on Courtney Drive have been here for twenty years. We've been paying all these taxes. One of them is holding a bag. All of us here are going to be holding a bag. Here's your profit takers. And we want to talk about the stock market, here they are. Profit takers. It's so obvious. I mean, what is, K, K, K P's the only one that can't see the thing. He's up front. He's never going to see these things. Never going to see it. Am I right? Well, he's, his house is situated. Will he see these things? So who's the one that's got all the advantage? Right there. Plus, 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 plus. Courtney Drive, negative, 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 negative. He's been paying taxes for twenty years. Just like, he's been here twenty years too. I get it. He's one. There's, there's five or six of us on the street. You know, it's just, it doesn't make any sense. How much, how much, how much tax money do you get for this, for the year? Ten thousand? That's a house, that's a house and a half. Build a house and a half and you get the taxes.
You've got to cut down trees to build houses.
Yes. How many trees, you guys? How many trees they, how many trees they're cutting down?
You can't do this.
How many trees they cutting down?
No, no comments. He's talking.
How many trees are they cutting down?
Sixteen hundred.
Okay. Want to take a house down, how many, how many trees are they going to take down? Ten? You know, and a house and a half pays you ten thousand in the year. And the profit takers are going to make millions. I've talked to people. They're going to make millions on this deal. And guess what? We're not even going to get the cheap electricity. They're going to bring it to Lowell. They're going to bring it to, you know, where? Where out there? Hayville, places in Lawrence. They're bringing this cheap electricity. Give it back to Byfield. How come they, how come they won't give it to Byfield? How come they're bringing that, that electricity out there? They're going to shoot it out there. You know any answers to that? I mean, did anybody answer that question?
We did.
And what did you come up with?
That they weren't doing it, but I don't know anything about this current proposal.
Well, that's all I had to say at this point, I guess. I mean, it just, it all.
Hi, I'm Julie Bennigan. I'm one of the new owners at six Courtney Drive. And when we talk about the ideas of the real estate values going up or down and there's no studies, I can tell you, from my personal experience, we looked at a lot of properties. One of the first things you do when you're looking for a new home in this day and age is you hit Google Earth and you see what's out there. What, where is the, what does the property look like from the sky? What's going on? What's it surrounded by? Well, behind this house was forty-something acres of forested land. That's fine. That was nice. We liked that. So as we moved forward with the property, it then came up that there was a potential for this power plant to be in the neighboring property. So I spent over an hour at town hall going through all the documents that were handed to me to try to make an educated decision as to whether or not we're going to walk away from this property or not. After reading and processing and talking to some other people in the town, not my neighbors, I did not know them at that point. There's other people in town. People really had the idea that it had been shut down and it would really be foolish for Regal to be coming back, doing to all the hoops that they needed to go through. And it seemed like it was dead in the water. So we moved forward. At this point, I'm not happy about this going on at all. I can also tell you, the house was on the, on the market for over eighty-four days. I bought the house for less than what the marshals paid for it four years prior. In the real estate market, the way it, and they did not overpay back then. They put in many, many upgrades that actually should have given them a higher purchase price than what they had paid for. They made a lot of upgrades. It's a beautiful house. But they lost money on it. I got a, a deal. I took a risk, I guess. But, you know, I can tell you that the marshals sold their house for less than they paid for it in an upswing market. And I really do believe that because this was even on the table, it scared a lot of buyers away because they, I have kids. I did not expect this to be in my backyard. And I can tell you from personal experience that property values will decrease from fucking your Realtors and just being Joe Chopper. You know, there's a lot of properties out there. People come to Newbury for the quiet town, for the character. town, for the character, for the history of it, and they don't want to have an industrial site and a residential area.
Hello, my name is Regina Fritchy, I'm also a neighbor.
You're number one.
I'm also a neighbor.
Number one, Courtney Drive.
I am number one, yes.
Number one.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be informed about the matter, since it is, you know, right in our backyard. I guess I did have a couple of questions on the overall project. I'm not very familiar with the technical details, there's a substantial amount of information, legal and technical, to review, but I did have a question on, you know, the overall maintenance of the landscape and how that will actually be held to on the long term. You know, if five, ten years come long, and, you know, you decide to move to a condo in New York City, and then this property is no longer sort of residential, how is this going to be held and maintained over time? That's a concern.
So if we, if we get to an approval on this project, there will be conditions.
Okay.
And one of the conditions would be a maintenance, operations and maintenance plan that is adhered to, that has requirements to do replacement of landscaping if the landscaping dies.
Okay, I understand, so there are some controls in place for that? Let's, information.
Well, they're not, they're not there yet.
Not there yet, okay, working on that.
But if we do, if we do do something like this, we would have something like that in place.
Okay. Another thing I heard mentioned was the use of pesticides and fertilizers. And I was wondering, I am a chemist, I'm a drainer, and I am familiar with the health hazards to being, you know, close to an industrial site with use of chemicals. And I want to know, how will that be also adhered to over time?
Well, I think, I guess I'll refer it to Steve. It's my sense is no.
We do not use them.
Okay, that's fine to say here, but like, what is the, the control of that?
Well, whoever does the operations and maintenance cannot use that, it will be a member that cannot.
It's going to sell it.
Right, it's going to sell it. So as long as the solar system is there, it will not.
Okay. And I guess another one I had was about potential fire. I know that if you install a chemical plant, you know, sort of in a new area, you would want the fire department to understand what things they may need to have in place to deal with an explosion or a fire, and I just wanted to see if the due diligence has been done on that part of this project.
Well, the chief, a year and a half ago, and I'm not sure where, how far you got with, with the fire department.
It really hasn't changed, and he is fine with what we're doing there. Providing access on the road and up to the gate, and they'll be training for the fire department.
Okay.
Before this installation goes into.
Now, what about any, like, you know, fire alarm installations on the property for maintenance personnel to use, or?
They, they have to be trained to go on-site, so they'll know what to do.
So if a fire occurs on-site, is there a place to, like, pull a fire alarm? You know, it's kind of, no.
On-site?
No.
So I, I have a question about that for a second. So did you meet with the new fire chief, and did you? Because the fire chief, the, the, it's two fire chiefs ago is the letter on this one. Did you, did you, did you have another letter?
Who's the, who's the fire chief?
No. Have you met with the new fire chief?
I have not.
Okay.
Thank you.
One of my concerns, I just have two last points, I don't want to just keep talking here, but when I grew up, my parents owned a farm, place in Massachusetts, a long time ago, and we actually sold land off to a power plant, and so it, it does bring up a little bit of familiarity. And I did feel that when the project was brought to my family, it was, we have controls, and we have this and that, and then once the permit is put in place, well, time passes, and there's more noise, and there's more trucks, and there's more interference. So it's actually a personal experience that I have. So we came to come, you know, Newbury because of the beautiful countryside and the pristine care, so it was a little bit, you know, heartbreaking to see that that, there is a potential that that would be taken away. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to say something at this time?
John Tru, one fifty, Main Street, Main Street. I've lived at that address for twenty-three years. And I wrote that one down, I was going to say, right. The backyard of our home abuts Courtney Drive on two sides, and consists of a pond, wetlands, and a stream. My husband Bill and I are concerned that a project of this size could produce flooding on our property and significantly damage our home. There are two reasons we feel that this might happen. The elevation of our yard is significantly lower than the surrounding properties, including the Asaires. And when our pond, which is in our backyard, reaches its maximum height, it begins to drain into the south-flowing stream which flows under Courtney Drive and into the Asair property. In nineteen ninety-six, when the Courtney Drive project was before the planning board, it was ironically David Asair, he's now deceased, but he was the owner, he was one of the owners of the Asair property, he recognized that the Courtney Drive road would block the stream in our backyard and cause damage to our home. So as a result of David's intervention, the Courtney Drive project did experience significant delays, and yet, the final plans for the road were satisfactory to all parties involved. Courtney Drive was built responsibly, with no flooding or damage to the abutters. The Asaires were able to continue to use the stream for their livestock. I would like to ask the planning board to consider how this project will affect the wetlands, ponds, and streams of the neighboring properties, and be certain that the streams are clearly marked on all maps. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a letter from fifteen, fifteen, five, zero.
Okay. What, what address do you live at, again?
One fifty.
One fifty.
One five zero.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'd turn to you and see if you guys have any response. It's kind of difficult because of the magnitude of what Alicia presented, but do you want to respond in any way to what was presented by the community, or do you want to?
I guess what I would like to respond to is any questions that arose that you might have aboard from that, that would address.
Looking back to the continuation process.
We've gone over these before, and I just wonder if there's any ones that are outstanding that you think we need to address.
That's pretty difficult to figure out. We have gone over a number of issues. The only thing that came up that I was not that familiar with was the April letter.
It is actually in the adoration.
Right, but I just wasn't familiar with it. And what that meant, have you, so have you been familiar with that one?
Yeah.
So this is, for those who are in the audience, adequate provisions shall be provided to stormwater management. And there was a, this, an assertion by the, by the, by the community that potential flooding impact to neighborhood homes resulting from the floodplain rising and its stormwater impact on neighbor, referred to a letter, it says, referred to letter dated April twenty-fourth on Christian and Sergi. So if you could kind of address that, that would be helpful.
Yeah, in the, in the final days of, of kind of the review and permitting process with DEP, there were a number of review letters that are included in the special permit application. In particular, there were two from Christians and Sergey, and, and those were all part of the DEP review, and there were responses from us to DEP, to the issues raised in all of those letters, and to DEP satisfaction. Those, those were all addressed, and...
What was the date of the DEP letter?
The DEP letter was, it was after that final.
It was after April.
Yeah, yeah, the DEP letter, I've got it right here, sorry, there's so many forms here. I think it was, is it April twenty-fifth, April twenty-six?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. The, the other letter. This was issued, it was addressed to Ms. Tracy Peter on April twenty-seventh, and that did include, I can't remember, one or two letters to Mrs. Peters, or from Mrs. Peters, sorry, and then the two review letters as well from Christians and Sergey, to which we've provided rebuttals, responses to those as well.
Well, I guess, Rob, I would be interested in, as Alicia was reading through these, were there, in your mind, are there, are there things in the DEP letter that address all of these? I'm not saying that you need to do it right now, but I mean, maybe that's something that could be done, that says, you know, DEP looked at all of these things, and here's what they found.
Sure, sure, I would be happy to. And I, I would say that the, the, all of the issues addressed in there were, were dealt with to the satisfaction of DEP, and I, and, and to the extent that issues of off-site flooding to abutters, that absolutely one hundred percent is considered, no question about it. And, and I can, I can tell you that, you know, this, this is, this is my area of expertise. My background is a doctorate in water resources engineering, I've got a diplomat in water resources engineering, and a licensed professional engineer, recognized expert in low-impact development. And I, I can pretty much guarantee you that this project is probably lower impacted than any project in the entire town, and I can, I can, from a water quality and hydrology perspective. And, and it's, it's for a bunch of real simple reasons. The infiltration trenches and the low-impact development that are, that are used out there capture the runoff that would occur, they put it back into the ground. So that's the hydrologic side of it. But that's, there's a lot more to water quality impacts than the structures that are out there. The neighbors, the roads, all of these have impacts, and the amount of traffic that's going to be out at this site is going to be next to nothing. So there will be very little traffic, which is a major source of pollutants and contamination, far less that are on all the, all the residential streets surrounding. There, there are no cleaners, or pesticides, or fertilizers, or chemicals that are going to be used at this site. And those are also a major source of contamination. So from a water quality standpoint, and from a hydrologic standpoint, this site is, is probably one of the lowest impacts you could permit. I would, I would challenge anybody here, other than, say, pure conservation land, to find a project that you could, that would actually be a lower impact, because most projects have a building, they have roads, they have uses that are routine, this really doesn't have any of that. Once it's up, it has, you know, really twice annual maintenance where somebody comes through. You know, we can't argue the issue of, of habitat, because there's no question that there's, there's habitat impact within those twelve acres. But to consider that impact without the larger, with that, outside of the larger context, fifty-six acres of conservation land that are repotted, there are lots of permitted, potentially permitted uses back there, which would be, have far greater impacts, and that I, I would challenge Mrs. Greco to find that these are, that, that, any of these other permitted uses that potentially wouldn't require a special permit would be far greater in impact. As an example, residential neighborhood, right? And we know residential neighborhood would be, would be a greater impact, and would not result in the same amount of conservation setbacks. So even though there's a fence in place, sure, but the, you know, fibians still get to wander through there. It's not the same impact, it's not zero impact, but neither is that, is that necessarily the requirement. Low-impact development doesn't say no impact. It is, it's the best available practice, the best available technology, and that's generally the standard that we're, that design professionals, whether we're talking about pollution control for your vehicles, or pollution control for your air, air quality or water quality, it's the best available technology. And these really are, it does meet that standard. And it's not just the trenches we're talking about, it's the, it's the long-term operations and maintenance of the site as well, the commitment to the maintenance practices that have low significance as well. And I, and I know that probably sounds like a pretty outlandish statement to say this is one of the lowest impact uses, but I really would ask you to try and challenge yourself to think of a lower-impact site than water quality and hydrologically. Now, that's different than, than this wall acres clearing, but there is, this could be a woodlot, right? This could be a woodlot. And a woodlot would, could have twelve acres of clearing. And there are, there are, there are lots of uses. The standard is not zero impact that we're talking about. The standard is best available technology, and is, is it an appropriate use there?
All right, thank you.
Can I, can I speak to that?
Yes, just a second. What I'm trying to do, though, Alicia, is, is to figure out what our next steps are with, with the applicant relative to trying to fuse together the concerns of the community and, and try to come to grips with, with what, what are the things that are still valid, and some of the things that have been answered, especially by the DEP response? Because the DEP response is not going to change.
No, but the DEP only speaks to the Woodlands Protection Act.
But, but let, what we can, we, we need to do is see to what extent you're claiming that it, that it has other kinds of ramifications, and that we need to look at, I'm just not sure about that.
Sure.
I'm just not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could try and answer that, and I, I think actually probably working with Martha might be the way to do this, but the, the list of, of concerns that we heard from Mrs. Greco and I were items that were, for the, I think, all raised in that, in the DEP review. I'm not sure there was one item in there that I heard that was new, with the, with the exception of the, with the exception of the critique of the newest application, if you will, you know, the deficiencies in that. Every item on there were, were items that were in the initial critique.
Yeah.
That was part of DEP, and, and it was, was something that has, has been...
So, so Martha, so I'm thinking that that's not a, that that might not be a bad thing to do, is to have the applicant, whether or not, you kind of go through this group of things, and come up and give us a letter that says, this thing, here's where DEP, and here's where they respond to it, here's where they don't respond to it. But it would be nice to have a checklist on these items.
Sure.
That have been submitted to us, and I think it is your responsibility.
And that would actually be very easy to do, because that's really been done. That was the response to DEP. And so...
Is it in there?
It is in there. And so the, the response letter to do, to DEP have listed all of those items. And then, I'm sorry.
What I was suggesting, Mr. Chairman, is we do have a very lengthy list of concerns that were raised by the abutters, going point by point through the requirements of the bylaw. It would be helpful if the applicant actually provided a written response.
That's right.
That includes a narrative as to how they believe they comply with the bylaw.
So, so I was thinking both, both.
So not just, you know, a re-ergitation of...
Right.
What happened at the DEP, because a lot of this is very specific to your zoning bylaw and not Woodlands Protection Act.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You good?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, Alicia.
I just want to say this, there's another thing that is unique to this property, is it's, you know, this, this project is sited on prime forest land, and there's a small little blue X, which you can see there, that's where the, the project is. So, again, the, this, this project, and then I have another one, I can give this to you.
What was this on?
So, in the, in the X, it's a brown, it's, that's, that's prime forest, forest land. So when they say that, you know, it's vacant, and it's, it's got no value to it, that's, you know, in the clearcutting, and I do take, I do take, I do take...
Exception.
Exception, that's the word. Exception to the fact that you, you saying that, you know, this is a low, a low impact. The difference with this project is you're clearcutting forested land in a zoned residential neighborhood to generate power. You're not clearcutting or developing to house people. That's the difference. This was, and it's, it's in a, if this was in a commercial, and Brago can attest to this, they was a commercial one, and places, and project place in, in the commercial. in places, a project placed in a commercial industrial, business-like industrial area, sale through. There was no comment about it, no issue with it, because it was appropriately cited. This is just all about appropriate, appropriately cited. And then this is, do you guys still have this? Okay.
Let me see. Is that the photo I took?
No, no, this is.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I've got a copy of that.
Yeah, he went out and then he took the pictures after they took the blue things down, right? Or was this before they were up? I think it was after.
Either or.
After.
It was after. So in this, in this, he has, I mean, I took pieces of it out, but he has the mitigation, the potential impact, the mitigation. Where he comes right out and he says that, you know, you're going to punch a hole in the canyon and it's going to impact the surrounding properties. And so.
I remember that.
That's, when he says it's low, low impact, it might be for the water as it stays on that site. But there's still no, no, I haven't seen anything meaningful that's going to show us that it's, that my basement's not going to flood and his basement's not going to flood and her basement's not going to flood. I have not seen that. I've seen it hap, as, as far as the DEP goes, they've done the work, this group has done the work to meet the standard of the Weapons Protection Act.
Can you guys address that?
Yeah, that's categorical or incorrect.
Good, good.
And that should be one of the narratives in the response letter.
All right. So maybe what we do is to make sure that you understand what we're talking about, is that Steve or, or Ron, Rob?
Ron.
Contact Martha and we'll make sure that you're going to do the, what we think needs to be done. And maybe, maybe we can do that tomorrow. Can we do that tomorrow?
Can the, can the neighbors be involved in that email transaction?
Well, that's not going to be email transaction to start with. It's going to be, probably be a meeting or a telephone conversation.
But once the meeting takes place, will we get the information on what their responsibilities have to be?
Sure, sure.
And also, the last.
Wait a minute.
Okay. Who are you? Jean McCarthy, five court and five. The last half a dozen times we've done all of this, they answer two or three of the 10 or 12 questions. And then you, planning board goes back and says, naughty boys, you didn't answer them all. Do it again and again. How many times are we going to keep going over the same thing? If you give them the list, Martha, and it's 15 things, they have to answer all of them. They can't say, oh, is that what you meant? It has to be a more direct approach this time. I think that there's a lot of coddling going on and we have to, as Alicia said, get to the point. We're talking about screening, that's the most important thing, appraisal values, and sticking to the bylaw, the bylaw.
And the flooding.
And the flooding. And not letting them answer three or four questions and then come back again and come back again and come back again. How long does it go on? Many years, Ben, many years.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Is anyone else?
Yeah, I just, why don't you go up?
Yeah, you got it.
You got to go up.
He said he's, I forgot his name, now he introduced himself. And he says he wanted to challenge another area. Well, guess what? Our landfill behind the dump is our, is, is the area that, is our challenge. One place.
Oh, we're doing it.
What's that?
We're doing that.
We're doing it, right. Isn't that surprising that we're doing it there? We want to do it in our area and our nice little residential area.
Well, that's what the town owns.
I'm just, my point is he's challenging us for another place.
No, I think that, you know.
And I, and as soon as he said it, I says, I got the place.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's who he was challenging us on.
That's what he did. He challenged us to find another place that would be better than this place in the middle of the forest.
I thought it was something good.
And I don't know if it's a question from us or after. It's the, the meeting that you're talking about being with him to address our, our issues. Do you need any information from us?
Well, we've got your document.
Yeah, I think it could be the points that you were.
I think, I mean, we're going to work off of this. And ask them to respond to the first, what, 14 points? And then the points that you make about our decision criteria.
They won't respond to all of them.
One is directly related to DEP. The other is related to, as Paul says.
Well, not related to DEP. It's related to stormwater.
Stormwater and DEP's answer to some of the questions that have been raised. So I think he knows what we're after.
So that's my point. Do you think it would be helpful if Tracy Peter, Martha, said it on this or that she could better explain what our issues are?
I'll take advice from Paul on this.
I think if Tracy has something to be submitted in writing for the applicant to respond to, that would be helpful.
Okay.
But ultimately, what we're looking for is a written response from the applicant. So anything that helps them understand exactly what it is that they're being requested to do is beneficial.
And, and maybe we could share, once you've developed the set of questions with Rob, you can maybe send them to Alicia and say, here, here's a copy of what we're going to be doing. Okay? Yes.
I need to ask a question. I just have a question for Rob and maybe you explained it and I didn't follow it. So you keep talking about stormwater management and that the infiltration trenches, there's going to be 39, they're 20 to 50 feet long, two to three feet wide. How deep were they?
About three feet.
Three feet. Okay, so stormwater, is that different from groundwater? So right now, there's, in my, there's 1,600 trees on 12 acres. 12 acres of grass cannot possibly absorb the same amount of groundwater. So can you explain the difference either here or in writing? So like, I'm not following.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. There's a lot of complicated, very complicated parts here. So, you know, the, the, the general statement that I think we're hearing about the, the impacts to tree clearing with respect to development in general is absolutely true. The loss of recharge, the cooling, the heating, all these other benefits. But the, the whole point of low-impact development is that you're trying to recreate a lot of the lost ecological functions through a form of higher quality development. It's the whole point of green infrastructure. And so, so to answer your point, the infiltration trenches are to manage stormwater runoff, which is the portion that's coming off, off of the, off of the solar panels themselves. And may travel across the ground surface, okay? And then when they hit the trenches, they could then go back into the ground and trap and hold the water in a way that essentially mimics the pre-develop, sorry, the, mimics the condition prior to development. Okay? So let me ask, ask one more thing. So essentially, when you develop a landscape, this building we're sitting in, the houses we live in, you lose what we call the sponge factor in your landscape. The sponge factor is, is developed in a number of ways, but primarily it's trees and vegetation, right? So when you lose the trees and vegetation, you have to add the sponge factor back in a number of ways. How do we add the sponge factor back? First ways, the entire site is vegetated with, with grasses. So that's a huge step. You hold a lot with that. The second way is with these infiltration trenches, which manage it. And we can actually develop these infiltration trenches to hold more water than that site would have in a forested condition. I concede that the, that habitat impact, you can't, there's no way to completely avoid that. And that is, that is the unfortunate aspect of development. The only other alternative, put it in a conservation land. I don't hear anybody offering to buy this land from PAVI. The, there is, the other development alternatives here are much higher impact. If you put a neighborhood back there, all sorts of other things.
So is the water in the trenches still water or is it moving?
It's, it's water that's held in there and then it disappears over time. So.
Over.
Over a 72-hour period. So part of the assessment was to look at the soils to make sure they're not clay soils. So we went out and we did test pits and very good sands around there. One of the reasons that they are shallow as they are is because we don't want to intersect with the groundwater table. And so you make them wide and shallow, then mold the water temporarily and it infiltrates.
So what about mosquito breeding ground with that much still water if it takes 72 hours to dissipate?
It's below the stone surface, so no, it wouldn't happen. It's not like open basin. It's, it's not like the catch basins that are on every corner and we drove by 100 of them on our way in. Those are all mosquito breeding grounds, every one of them. This is an infiltration trench that is full of stone. Doesn't, it, it, there's no way for mosquitoes to fly through that three feet of stone layer down to the bottom.
And so these trenches will absorb the groundwater that are currently feeding these 25, 30 feet, foot trees.
Yeah. So what it does, so what it does is it continues to feed your wetlands and it continues to feed the trees. Because part of how a wetland functions is that they just need to stay wet. If you, if instead we had a hill where we put a parking lot on the top, that, that wetland will dry up because the water just runs off and goes right around the wetland. Thus, puts the water back into the ground and continues to feed that wetland.
It goes back into the ground and then onto the abutting properties?
No.
Because it's not being sucked up and sent out to the river? Can you, okay, then can you put that in layman's terms in when you're, in your response to the planning board?
That is going to be my exact point.
I'm sorry.
I think this is something that'll be helpful to have in writing.
I want it explained to me so I can explain it to my students if they asked.
Sure.
So actually, I'm going to, I have need to read something to the record. This is an email exchange when we decided whether or not to continue to appeal the superseding order of conditions. This is from Phil Christensen and I should get a copy of this. This is going to be very technical, so I hope Mr. Rosen can, can listen and explain.
Can't you, can we, can we submit it? Why don't you just submit it? Just give it to us. But do you need to read it or?
I think I should read it.
Okay.
Just before you start that, this isn't going to be something that you're going to inadvertently waive any attorney-client privilege? Was your attorney involved in this?
No, no, I won't be able to make an issue. This is just from, from Phil Christensen, who was the hydrologist.
Before you start, can you just remind me which letter this is from Mr. Christensen?
This is when the superseding order of conditions was, was issued. This is in an email, it wasn't a letter.
Okay. So this is not the one that's referenced in your, in your conversation earlier?
I don't think so. It might be, but I'm not sure.
I think that was the April 24th.
I think it might, it might speak there. So we were deciding whether or not to appeal the superseding order of conditions. And what Phil Christensen said was that test pits were not dug as required to determine soil depth and water table depth. They used a soil auger which has a maximum length of 54 inches. T of the depth recorded in the auger reports, only one 1 to 54 inch, see my review letter? So those are any one of the things. The infiltration trench proposed is three feet deep with a ponding area above it of one foot. The trench has to be designed to be two feet above the water table or refusal. So the top of the pond is six feet above the water table or the deepest point to which the soil is excavated. So at best, the top of the ponding area will be 18 inches above the existing ground. What this means is that water will enter the trenches only if the ground up gradient of the trenches is raised to allow water to flow into the trenches. Where the augering was shallower than 54 inches, the trenches will be even higher above ground. The infiltration testing was performed in the subsoil and not the parent soil, thus providing rapid permeability rates. Infiltration rates used in the hydrocat report far exceeded the rate suggested in the wall's table for long-term design purposes. If proper rates were used in the analysis, perhaps far more or larger infiltration trenches would be, would be needed. I was never able to review the detailed plans, but from what I have seen, the design of the project regarding infiltration is inadequate in testing, hydrologic analysis, and other sizing to meet the requirements of Massachusetts Storm Mark Standards. While the project presented by Rosen is a vast improvement over the original submittal, it is severely lacking in proper design. If this type of work had been submitted to DEP for a subdivision rather than a solar project, I don't think it would have been approved. We are chasing both an information gap and information that could materially affect the project. The soils in which the infiltration trenches are to be built have a very low permeability, yet rapid permeability rates were used in the hydrocat analysis. Thus, the extent in design of the infiltration trenches is inadequate. In at least two of the trenches, the auger did not go deeper than 32 inches. Was that ledge or boulder? If ledge, it would significantly impact the design of the project. If 32 inches is the depth to ledge and there needs to be a two-foot separation from the ledge to the bottom of the trench, and the trench in the pond are four feet deep, the top of the pond will be 40 inches above existing grade. Or will the trenches be built at grade and the trench only excavated to 32 inches, refusal? Or will there be a redesign on site? And who will monitor that critical design change? So I think that's the.
May I ask you, that's from who?
Phil Christensen of Christensen and Sergey. He's a hydrologist.
And who was it sent to?
It was sent to Jeff Ross.
Is he still representing?
I guess. I haven't called him yet, yes.
Mr. Chair, if I could, there's nothing new in there. This was the last two letters that went back and forth with DEP and that were rebuttals to both of those. If you'd like, I could read you my rebuttal.
No, no, no. Please, no. What I would like is that you respond specifically to it when things, okay?
And just the first sentence, it says, "The statement by CSI is incorrect. Again, it would appear that CSI has misread the report and not carefully reviewed the information."
CSI is Christensen.
Yeah, and then he responds to that too.
Okay, so.
It's a, it's a real left.
Okay, we're not going to get into he said, she said, but you're going to respond to this stuff, okay?
You'll have it all in the record.
Thank you.
So what you want is?
No, I want, I want, yeah, submit it physically.
I didn't make a cup of coffee.
Oh, you don't have a cup?
No, this is, no, I didn't make it.
Well, then send it, send it.
I'll go make a cup.
Email it to, all right.
Or you can email it to me, but I. No, I get it.
So those, that email, that review exchange is in a special.
Okay. So I think that, are there, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to say something?
Just one more question.
Sure.
Is there a decommissioning plan for when this technology is obsolete and it's not as, what is that?
It's anticipated.
Oh, okay.
There's, there's two parts. There's a decommissioning plan and there's also a surety, meaning a guarantee in money that they have to put up so that if in fact everything is out of business, the town has the money to take it down.
Great, thank you.
We haven't agreed on the dollar amount.
Okay.
But that's because that was a year and a half ago.
I was going to monitor that. That's a question.
So.
On a regular basis.
What, they're going to be.
Any comments? I'm just going to close for community comment for a second and just ask for some board thoughts and comments.
I would say every board member will, will home individually and consider the material that Alicia read tonight, because there are several points in there that I would take exception to and I'm sure others might or might not. exception to and I'm sure others might or might not. But I want the opportunity, not right now tonight to do that. I think some time is required for us to refresh and remember. And we'll come back with our answers individually and then talk about them at the board level. It grates me when this is referred to as a industrial power plant. You know, I can't embrace that. I don't think anybody really can. Massachusetts describes it as a solar generating system or a solar power generating system, and that's probably what it is. That's what it is. You're not going to hear smoke and grinding gears and see smoke and have grinding gears and noise all night with this. It just won't happen. So that's a comment that I have to make, Alicia. Maybe you didn't hear that. But Massachusetts recognizes something like a solar system as a sun or solar powered generating system. It's not an industrial power plant. It really isn't.
But it's an industrial installation.
Industrial has some strange connotations. It's a commercial installation, but it's not industrial.
How can you think $7,000 is an industrial?
Industrial is fabrication of automobiles, trucks, planes. That's industrial. This is something idle. It doesn't do much except get a sun to you.
Well, I think it's industrial. I bet you think it would be.
Well, okay, I just said the state treats it as a solar power generating system. And that's what it is. You can call it anything you want, but I take exception to it.
Well, it's not a farm either.
Pardon?
It's not a farm either. Some people call it a solar farm.
Didn't say it was a farm.
Right.
Didn't say. And there was also a comment earlier made, I think by Jean, that we were coddling the applicant. And you still believe that. I take exception to that too because we give everybody fair treatment here. So if you think anybody's being coddled-
It's an opinion. It's my opinion, just like you have an opinion on the word commercial versus-
Yeah. But that opinion is an insult in a board sense. You can have that opinion.
Okay, Jim, do you have any thoughts?
I agree. There's a lot of material covered tonight. A lot of it's a year and a half old or more, but we still have to redigest it. And I'm looking forward to this summary, the written summary, so we can work off a written page. That would be a lot more productive, I think.
You guys?
Well, having been here for the last go around, I-
You having fun?
I am. Just more fun than anybody can imagine. So I think it would be very helpful to have, I just get the sense that we're dealing with the old information and the new information and which part, and it's kind of getting messed up. So I think, you know, as discussed, trying to just answer everybody's questions specifically, I think, will help everybody understand the process and what's proposed now.
So let me put together what I think we heard from George and also what we had talked about before. I think there is tremendous value, obviously, and we all need to read through what Alicia did here. And some of it is from stuff we already have and there's some updated information in here, but we all need to acquaint ourselves with this. But in the meantime, Martha and Rob need to get together and talk about what we, which is to go through this report on your own and to start answering this stuff. Now, I'm not exactly sure what, how, what we're dealing with in terms of meeting again or how fast we think we can get something done, at least in terms of this. There are a number of things here that have not been talked about, and that is that the contention on the part of the new buyer, and I'm sorry if I forgot your name, for unit, for house number six.
Julie, done again.
Julie, about housing values and the like. And we did go around on that quite a bit with Greg and we did a lot of research. And we went down to Dartmouth, Mass. We went down all over Massachusetts and it was inconclusive. But it's a subject that is obviously, I think, at the heart of your concerns. And so we have not addressed that yet. And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting we do it at this point in time, but it is something that needs to be discussed because in, as we finished a number of our meetings on the subject over the years, it really came down to that, that people were very much concerned about how it was going to affect the value of their homes. And I think all as property owners, we can all appreciate that. I mean, so it's something that's near and dear to your hearts and to our hearts as well. So we'll get on to that, but we did, not going to do, we have to resolve these first and maybe we can do it at the next meeting. I'm not sure. But what do you see as our timeline on this?
Well, our next meeting is scheduled for December 20th. The one after that would be January 3rd.
Two great days. What are you doing in terms of, are you going to be around? 20th? Everybody here? Is that too tight? What about for you?
I think the response will be fine. It really wouldn't, shouldn't take that long because honestly, I feel this information is there. It's just a matter of putting it in a form that it's, you don't feel like you have to wade through 300 pages to get to it. But I want to be sure that we get it to you early enough.
It's also the tougher types that we can review it. Paul can't be here. We need Paul to be here.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think we should, okay. So we'll meet again on the 3rd and we'll have a response to that. Board members will have read over this stuff and we will all reappoint ourselves with the project.
So on the, I have an electronic copy. This is the, we originally get it electronically. I pulled out some information that I didn't think was made in the C project from our last, the last box. So when you look through your hard copy-
Can you bring it next time?
-care it to the electronic copy that I'm going to get from my, put in the Dropbox. You might see some missing pieces, like the wind turbine setting. I took that out because that's not pertaining to this one. So I just wanted, don't think you don't pay it, but that's what I do.
So how many pages is that?
Oh, 260 maybe.
So wait, is that what you gave us a year and a half? So if we have that, we're okay?
You have it. But I'm going to give you another electronic copy. I've added about maybe 20 documents to this that aren't in that project, the one that you have. And I have taken out some things that don't pertain to this project anymore, but you'll have this electronically.
Okay, all right.
So I just didn't want you to get confused.
In what way do we get it electronic?
I'll put it on the Dropbox.
Oh, okay. That's what we're taking.
That's what I-
You know how we're going to take care of it?
That's what we'll take care of.
Yes.
Do we confirm January 3rd?
January 3rd.
I'm sorry.
No, I have to say it. We have to make a motion.
I move to continue the public hearing in this matter to January 3, 2018. I don't know if I said that, at 7:15 P.M.
Second. Any comment on that? All those in favor?
All right.
Thank you all. We have further questions we have to go over. All right. Merry Christmas to everybody. Well, good, just free things that I can say.
Take your time.
Thanks, Rob. We've talked about, we did talk about Coleman Rose and you, like, did you have anything on that?
Sorry.
I sent a soil test report.
Thank you.
Thank you. So would like to see Kim again and have a discussion in terms of his marketing strategy and whether he's going to go more than just old guys, you know? So, okay, then the recreational marijuana, we've talked about. And Byfield, I guess we've talked, Will Sher, what's, this is, you know-
It was just an update. So I guess one question on that for Byfield Estates. Did any of the other board members have any comments on the materials?
Did you see them?
I haven't seen all the new materials. I have.
See if you can read through them. We're going to get together on Monday. So if you could, if there's anything in there that you want to make a deal about. Okay. And then Will Sher wrote, this is Mark DePiro.
Right. So this is just an update. I got a phone call from him last Wednesday saying he was about to pave and email from his assistant saying that I should pave the road on Friday.
The, the, the loop?
The horseshoe, yeah.
What was it before? It was paved?
It was base coat.
Oh, just base coat.
So I've been trying to get in touch with the review engineer, which was the helicopter associates from that project to see if he's scheduled to come and go and inspect before the road returns. Mark will be coming before us with a request to release somewhere about $100,000 to be held, waiting for stage values from him to then tie the release.
There was another release that we had, wasn't it? Didn't we have to switch releases like six months ago or something?
He wanted us to switch.
Units, that's right.
And then, which was advised not to have that done, so.
Right.
About $100,000 as the requirements here. So who wants to release that?
Well, he's got one, two, three, four, five under, done, and one under construction. He's got three more to go. I think he has nine, total of nine?
Eight.
No, I thought it was eight too, but I was looking at the site the other day and I said, I thought he had room for three more.
No, it was eight.
It was, that's what I thought it was.
Agree with yourself.
No, but because there's room for one, two, three, and he's got one, it's four. So anyway, sorry. Well, I just hope you sell some. And then finally, oh, this is Kent Island.
Right. So we do have Fish and Wildlife is going to be, we're paying for age and doing some salt marsh restoration there. We did get the, so combined permit application. It's under Chapter 91 Waterways and a 401 dredging fill excavation water quality certification. So I do have that package if any of the board members want to take a look at it. I think it's going to be going before the Conservation Commission.
Do we need to just, do we need to do anything or?
You know, I think if there were any comments, we would need to make comments, but I-
Do you know, do you know what this bridge is? Do you know where it is?
It's on the interstate.
Yeah.
Right where Colby, the old Colby Farm is and there's a little walking trail and stuff like that.
But she was getting a butters list, a 100-foot butters list. So I think it's going to be going before the Conservation Commission soon, maybe at the next meeting. I'm not sure.
It's really just the perimeter goes across it. It's not very long, is it?
It's like 20 feet?
Yeah.
Maybe longer, 30?
Yeah, it might be. I mean, there's a photograph over here.
It's not much. So you know, you know, he used to live on Kent Island?
Yes, Captain.
J.K. Moore Quan.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I know this.
No, he died in like 65 or something like that, didn't he?
I think so.
But he wrote, you know, the book that he wrote about Newbury, which is point of no return. He wrote it on Kent Island.
Yes, yes, his mother, his mother.
Well, then you have something like that. Oh, he, he's, yeah, that's it. Oh, my God. Doesn't look too good, does it? Well, anyway, I, what do we, what do you suggest we do? Go and take a field trip and take a look at it?
Is there, is there a summary in there?
Um, there, yeah, there's a summary here. There's some laws that go along with it. I don't have it in electronic version. It exists. But there's discussion of the construction period and erosion control and what they're, what they're planning on doing, dredge solar cap.
How many pages is this? It's like, oh, summary.
I could probably distill some of it out from the copy. I have to see if you can set it through.
I'll do it.
Okay. I think that's it.
That's it, I'm sure.
Second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well done.